Awards, we're going to celebrate this season and we're going to thank you so much for watching here at Town Meeting Television on Channel 17, of course, on Comcast in Burlington Telecom and 217 and 317 and CH17.TV and YouTube and all the ways that we go live and open the doors of local government for you. It is our pleasure to do so. So Ed Baker is with us and Ed, Ed is a producer. This is 2019. Have you been producing for more than 2019? Does it go back to 2018 or did you start this year?
Well, this September of 2019 was the beginning of the third year. So it's fully two years beginning of the third year. I know it went by quick.
It went by so fast. Well, we're giving you the most shared award because your programs have incredible reach and maybe you could say a little bit about the Addiction Recovery Network and why you're doing this series?
I sure will. I mean, this fills my heart with joy and the Addiction Recovery Channel is devoted to sharing accurate and timely information with the general public when it comes to people with addiction. The driving force of the show is to reduce stigma and increase compassion so that people with substance use disorder are seen as people with any other legitimate medical disease. It's my belief that there's a thirst, there's a hunger in the community for accurate information and that once people have accurate information, they unlearn stigma and they unleash compassion. And as a result, we actually save lives. And I know that you and your team know that because of how energized you've been supporting the effort. So thank you.
Well, you've done some great programming. It has a lot of reach. People all over the state and beyond are watching and they, folks can tune in to CH17.TV and watch Ed's previous shows. And we're just really grateful to have you in our orbit of community producers. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Ed Baker, there we go. Ed is a very dynamic producer and has, I think when he started, he wanted to do four shows a month. He was very, very excited and he has been quite prolific and we're very grateful for him. One of our other award winners is actually behind the camera. His name is Michael Blood and Michael has worked with us for a few years now and he is our archivist. You're behind the camera. And Michael, you get the detailed and determined award because without your detail and your focus, we would not be able to be doing the archival transfers that we are doing eight hours a day like a little mini factory, but you are making it happen and thank you so much. I'm not sure we can get a good shot of Michael unless he comes out from behind the camera. There you go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And how's it been for you to be doing the archiving work?
It's been good. It's been very enlightening on the archival process and the history of Burlington in general.
Well, we're just very blessed to have you doing work. Thank you so much. Congratulations. John Douglas, we're going from Michael, who is one of our newest folks, to John Douglas, who has been supporting our work since the beginning, haven't you?
Well, that's true.
Since even, you were even the beginning before we were doing our work. You were doing alternative media.
Yeah, with Newsreel and all, but I remember that I came over and you said, okay, you got to read the announcement for the support of Latin American revolutionaries or something. I said, oh, okay.
Did I say that? Okay.
But it was, it was one of the early meetings in Dan's lounge.
In the Big Hill Cafe.
Actually, when you called the telephone for to make the cable work, I think.
Well, we did.
It was, there was a, it was that kind of moment. It was fantastic.
It was. That was 1984.
You have been at it. It's beautiful. Really wonderful.
Thank you. Well, you know, it's been many, many years, but many, many people who have helped to keep free speech free because it's not easy work and we have to do it together.
Well, I'm going to bring some more of the little CCTVs because I've been digitizing a lot of those old tapes.
Oh, fantastic.
So that would be beautiful.
John, thanks for everything. We love you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
You and CCTV.
Absolutely. We're here. We're celebrating Town Meeting Television and CCTV and the holiday. It's, it's the darkest time of the year. My mother wonders if she's the only one that's a little depressed by the dark and I said, no, everyone has a little bit of a hard time with the dark. But we don't hear today because Oak is with us. Oak Lo Galbo, thank you.
They drafted me. Hi Bella.
Good to see you. So Oak was one of our channel directors and has been part of the CCTV family for years and years. Thank you so much.
I was just thinking about how the, at first I just took a video class and then I started borrowing like a camera to go to say a demo and of course, you know, wonderful interviews, all done with a camera mic. You got in here, and then trucks going by and then you said, well, you'd get much better results with a microphone.
Well, then you, you got the message. You started to make some great video.
Yeah. And then I was, you know, doing a cable and said, oh, I learned a little this at CCTV, yeah.
How to coil them.
Yeah, how to coil them. And you know, we were coil Nazis sort of, you know, because there was only a right way. There's only really one right way.
To wrap a cable. That's absolutely true.
Maybe two.
So do you remember the South African diplomat that came?
Oh, yeah.
Say a little bit about that because when we were looking at the archives, that's one of the episodes that really stands out. Do you remember what happened?
You know, I think it was at one of the parties I may have spoken at or a CCTV anniversary of some sort. He came, there was still the apartheid government and he was a representative of the apartheid government and he was a representative who completely defended it, of course, they all did. And some people went to demonstrate and some people were more aggressive than others, you know. I had a broken leg.
Sitting on his car. Yeah. You got a broken leg from that?
I had a broken leg and I had a cast, you know, and so I like backed up with crutches, but people sat on his car and then he, he got really angry and suddenly floored it.
People went flying.
And drums were flying and all that, yeah.
And then he was not charged because he was a diplomat.
He was charged, not charged, but he was, there was a charge against him because on the way out of flying, you know, people, he hit a cop in the hand with his mirror or something. And so of course it was a charge against him. Yeah, that was a problem.
And then Current Affair, Maury Povich, I don't know if you remember that show, but Current Affair bought that footage from us. It was the first stuff, it was the first program that we had that was on national TV. But what we didn't know, they paid us to use it, but they used it over and over and over and the episode in slow motion, like, let's look at this again and everyone's flying and we thought, oh, we should have charged them more.
We should have charged. I think it was Nat who came and videotaped that event. And there was somebody there who looked similar to me, somebody I know. And I was like, so people were saying, wow, you really gave it to them. I said, no, I was backing up on my crutches. What are you, oh, see, but we're both wearing berets. That's...
Always on the front line.
Yeah.
Great to see you. Thanks for coming tonight. Oak Lo Galbo, one of our favorites. Hi, good evening. Welcome. Good. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Rachel.
Rachel.
Yes, I'm an artist and a student in Burlington, Vermont, and I'm here to experience something new and be a part of, learn about the media program that they have here.
Oh, I'm so glad that you came. So you make media yourself or is that something you want to learn how to do?
I'm interested in mixed media. I'm a painter. I'm an artist. I like to do all kinds of different forms of art, write, make music, make sculpture, floristry and filmology, storytelling and poetry. So...
Oh my gosh, you're just a Renaissance person. Well, this is CCTV and Channel 17 are the place for the Renaissance people. We're so glad you could come this evening.
Yeah, I'm thankful to be here. Thank you.
That's good. Well, enjoy the party and have some fun and meet some people. And thanks so much for coming, Rachel.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a great night. That's awesome. That's good. We've got Peggy Lores with us. Peggy is one of our most prolific and ongoing producers. Welcome.
Thank you.
Great to see you.
Nice to see you.
So you've been doing Feminist Media Review for more years than I can remember.
I can't remember how long it is, but it must be over 20.
A long time.
Long time.
And do you feel this has been a valuable use of your time?
I do. I do. And I liked, this week I talked about the morale, or the lack of morality in the media. I mean, if you say that, you know, a budget is a moral document, so is what's put on the media. And if you put on somebody who is divisive and racist and misogynist 24 hours a day and you blank out a Bernie Sanders who has a decent message, that's a moral decision. Or I should say that's an immoral decision if I talk. I mean, I might rather talk about ethics than morals, but you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Well, and then I think just that you can come on television and talk about these ideas that may not be in the mainstream. I think it's really important, right?
I mean, one of the things I've been doing lately is just sort of pointing people through some other sources that I watch, like say The Young Turks or, you know, because there's a lot of sources besides what's really propaganda from the corporate class. So the other thing that happened that's great for me is that someone found some of my stuff and put it up on another channel on YouTube without me knowing it. And I was just going through, it was this thing called Baby Rad Fem and I was going through it because I'm interested in their content and there I was. Three of my shows in full were there and they had really picked the right ones. They picked one on eco feminism, one on radical feminism, and I got a lot of good comments. So I decided that's a thing I want to do more of.
Expand.
Focus on feminism for the web because it was neat to, because I, because one of the things I think is really sad is that radical feminism, second wave feminism has disappeared into this miasma of post-modernism and, and you know, 55 genders. And it's really sad and it's really important and it was really an analysis and you can't just say, oh, well now we have the new feminism. I mean, you wouldn't say that about Marxism, you know, you would, you would not throw away. It's a me, it has a meaning. There was, you know, a lot to it. And, and also I've found that I've gotten great response from young women when I tell them about it.
Well, anything to expand their reach is good work. So get creative.
It's great that Channel 17 is here and stays here and manages to keep it up. It's a great thing.
We're working on it. Doing a lot of advocacy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Thanks. Peggy Lores, Feminist Media Review. We have the Senator Beruth. How are you?
I'm good, Lauren.
Nice to see you. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Absolutely.
So you're not here because it's election season because it isn't quite, right?
No, holiday season.
It is holiday season. So glad that you're here.
Thanks for the voters. That's...
Absolutely. Well, you also teach, right? You have another life. You're not just a political figure.
Finished classes at UVM and sent those students off to their families and everybody's happy.
That's good. We love that. So this year we spent some time on a study committee in the legislature to look at different ways of funding the work that we do going ahead. And we were really very fortunate to have the support of the legislature to do that. So thank you.
Absolutely. And just to point out to people at home who might not bring it to consciousness all the time, not everybody has a setup like this. A community television station that is as plugged into the community and providing as much programming and programming time. So, you know, it's something to be thankful for.
Absolutely. What are you going to be working on this session coming up?
So I have a couple of things personally that I'm working on, most around gun safety. So two bills, a 48-hour waiting period following the purchase of a firearm to bring down the rate of suicide, which is abnormally high in the state of Vermont. And the second is to restrict the carry of semi-automatic weapons in public places. So I believe we should be trying to find consensus on firearms and I don't think we've reached a consensus on banning semi-automatic weapons. I do think we've reached a consensus that we don't want them in the public square. We don't want them in churches, stores, childcare centers, airports, that sort of thing.
All right. Well, that's going to be very controversial, probably no matter what, even if we have reached consensus, right?
Right. Because there are always advocates on the other side who want no change and no change is unacceptable at this point, given what we experience on the news every other week with a mass shooting here, a mass shooting there.
You know, the reason I know that this is an important issue is obviously it's an important issue, but in Essex Junction, when they have their regular trustees meetings in Essex and Essex Junction and we air them live, you might have 40 or 50 people watching them. But when it's gun hearing, there are 1,500 people watching live.
Yeah.
So it is a subject of intense public interest.
Right. And Essex is a special community in that regard. They've had unfortunately some high-profile tragedies there, more than one. And they also have a lot of people who are very respectful of gun owners' rights. And so you put that together, it's a, it's a potent mix. And again, what I would like is to reach solutions that we can all agree on, like universal background checks. It was controversial for a long time. Now it's law, signed by Phil Scott, a Republican. And if you go out and ask people, nobody's worked up about it now. I hope the same will be true with these.
Well, I'm so glad that you came tonight and thank you for your service.
Thank you and happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Great to see you, Philip. Senator Philip Beruth, he's one of our friends here at Channel 17 Town Meeting TV when we do elections. 2020 is a huge election year for us. We have Town Meeting coming up in February and March and then of course we have the primaries and the general election. So we'll be doing about 80 election forums over the coming year. It's quite significant. Do we have Erin joining us? Our, the Chair of the CCTV Board is joining us. Here we go. There we go. She'll be right over. Erin Malone, thanks for coming.
You're welcome. Good to see you.
We're so glad that you are part of the work that we do. Tell us what motivates you. Big question.
Big question. Well, I think what always motivates me is community and I think CCTV has a 35-year history of facilitating community within the Old North End, all of Burlington, kind of all levels. And so that's why I'm here.
Well, and you do too because you own Momo's Market, formerly the Willard Street Market. So that is a great community center. You have those wonderful parties in the fall and it's just, it's been great to have that business thriving. Thank you.
You're welcome, Elsie.
And thanks for being on the CCTV Board and leading us. We appreciate it.
Okay. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Great. Well, we are having a party. If you've just joined us here live, tonight is the 12th of December and we are at Town Meeting Television Studios. We're trying to talk about ourselves in terms of Town Meeting Television because the number of Channel 17 is going to be retired on the Comcast dial and we're going to be moving up to a new neighborhood with the other access channels that'll be in the 10s, the 1,000s. And that'll happen in the spring. So you'll be hearing more about that. It will, it just means we've got a different number. And this is part of a settlement that we've made with Comcast in order to have more information on the electronic program guides. So long story short, we agreed the channels are moving and that way we can all be able to put detailed information on, on the electronic program guide so you know what's coming up and you know what you can record and save for later and when to watch it. So this year, 2019 was filled with a lot of advocacy and litigation and trying to get the funding stream settled for the work that we do. And of course, part, all of you watch cable television, part of your bill goes towards this work that we do, the open meetings, the community training. The advocacy is very important and your support is vitally important. And also we depend on you as donors, philanthropists, who can help contribute to the day-to-day work that we do. So of course, this would not be a holiday program without a little plug to go to CCTV.org, donate and help us to keep this important work going. So I would just want to say thank you so much for being with us. We have plenty of more awards that we'll be giving out. Let me just say before we close who we're recognizing this year. These are just a few of the people, but including Dennis Rest, who's been using the channel for personal growth and development, which is one of the things people do. Ella Stats, who is our innovative intern this summer. It was a lot of fun to have her here. Micah Trombley and Margaret Harrington, the dynamic duo. They produced great series of programs this summer. James Jerome, who is, does beautiful programs. I would ask you to just look for his, his holiday program. Maybe, Aiden, you want to show a little bit of that even though James isn't here? He's our prolific producer and he's done some really wonderful work with The Artful Word. That's his series. But he did a really nice Christmas program and we wanted to make sure you saw a little bit of it. Bruce Wilson has been doing community and youth organizing work for years and is doing a regular series here. And Aiden White, who's in the director's seat, of course. We've got some great awards. And Jean Bergman, welcome. Nice to see you. How are you?
Congratulations.
Yeah, happy holiday.
Happy holidays to you. This is quite a nice event.
It's a nice event. We're glad you could come.
Well, you know, it's in my neighborhood and...
You're retired.
And I'm retired, which means I'm like wicked busy. I need a vacation half the time.
What are you doing?
Oh, doing some work for some city councilors. You know, you retire from the city attorney's office and you have these connections and these skills and you get to use them. So doing that and working some, for some community groups. The First Unity Society and Vermont Interfaith Action and Rights and Democracies. So yeah.
Terrific.
And trying to get some skin in if the weather will cooperate, but this climate change really kind of stinks.
Yeah, well, it's a lot of melting. But you know, I really, I really appreciate that you, your many years of community activism and also that you're willing to continue it at a time when, you know, many people might just decide they're not going to do that anymore.
Well, you know, I got a grandchild. Wendy and I have a grandchild coming on the way. And so, you know, there's a world that we have to, to do lots of important stuff for.
Yeah, because of the next generation.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I want them to inherit a less yucky place, you know, because it's going to be hard and we need to do all we can to...
We have to pry those doors open and power and make sure we get some people in there.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, and, and shining light. So like you guys, I mean, this is really important stuff. I mean, I hear all the people that I, including me, who will tune into the city council from the comfort of my home.
Isn't that nice?
It's great, you know.
It's live.
Let me sit and in my, you know, and I can yell at the television. Nobody yells back at me. I can, you know, plot and plan. That's pretty cool. But then it's sort of like, I have to thank you all for giving us the forum to do that show on the downtown development district that we defeated last year because they were going to take away the public control. It was a terrible proposal and the people of Burlington saw that, you know, and CCTV gave us a real avenue that we would not have had, you know. And there were a lot of people went, wow, that was really good. I saw you on TV. And other, the other two people, Larry and Betsy, it was, it was really very important, you know, you can't, otherwise you have to buy your way on, you know, and like, this is just fundamentally wrong, which is, or as Bernie would say, totally wrong. It's just totally wrong.
Which is why to have these alternative channels is so important.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So you're, you're fighting that good fight with, you know, on the national level.
We are. We're fighting all the time. Never stop, never sleep.
We can give you a little, little, little support here to, to help you get to age 36. I don't know, have you seen Wendy? She's got a little something for you guys.
Thank you very much. It's great to see you and thanks for all your work.
And say hi to Mark.
I will. Thanks so much. Jean Bergman, former city councillor and also city attorney and now retired activist. Says some activists never die or fade away. That's really great news. All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We wish you the very, very best for all the winter holidays and the solstice holidays. We're so glad you could join us. Oh, we might have one other person. Surprise, it's Herb Sinkinson. Herb, ho, ho, ho.
How are you?
Very good, Santa. How are you?
Hello out there in TV land.
Nice to see you.
I should have worn my Santa hat, you know, instead of wearing this Telluride ski cap, but oh, well.
We get the idea.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
How you doing?
Very good.
It's nice to be back here at Channel 17 where I've been a guest on many a show over the years.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And it's just a pleasure to see you.
Yeah, well, it's great to be back. And a lot of familiar faces and...
Any new shows on your mind that you want to do?
Well, I don't know. You know, I'm, I'm still interested in the criminal justice world and in justice in general. So you never know.
There's some material there.
Yeah, now that I'm retired, I have a little bit more time on my hands than I used to.
Absolutely. Well, congratulations. We hope you spend some of...
Alrighty. Well, thank you. Great to see you.
Happy holiday.
Happy holidays to you and to all you.
All yous. Herb Sinkinson, longtime supporter and friend of ours. Been great, great to have him visit us. So Andrew, why don't you come on? We love Andrew Champagne. He, I think, we don't have an award for you tonight, but if I was going to give you, it would be the glib, the glib, most glib award. Because not, come over here.
I'll take it.
Because not everybody can actually just talk for 30 minutes and it's a very small universe of us and you are in that universe.
Well, I, I just want to thank everyone for the holiday party. We are on the second Wednesday of the month at 5:25 and Channel 17, Old North End. We're here with all our friends. I want to thank you, Megan, and this is a great holiday party and I love Burlington. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Andrew. Great to see you. All right. The Burlington Democrats Show, that's the show that Andrew produces and he did his show last night. His guests didn't come, but that didn't stop him. So God bless the people that actually can extemporize and do live television. So I think we're going to wrap it up now. Thank you so much, Michael. Thank you, Aiden. Thank you, Kim. Thanks to all our friends for really helping us to produce 1,100 hours of programs and countless community visits and internships and keeping free speech free as we know. This is one of the very, very few platforms that is truly non-commercial media and we are privileged to serve you. So thank you so much and have a very happy holiday and a blessed 2020.